I wanted to let everybody know that I have an appointment and will have to leave at about 11:15.
Go ahead, Derek.
Okay. Good morning, council and staff. I'd like to begin with about a couple of weeks ago here in relation to the ongoing water issues at our local beaches in Port Maitland and Mavallette. I was asked to take or offered to take Councilor Durkey and our CAO Victoria Brooks through our Port Maitland plant to show them the process of how that works. From that, I was asked to come to council here to give us a quick, the rest of council, a quick snapshot of just how the plant works and what we're required to do out there. So I put together a few things in a quick little slideshow here just to help understand the process and maybe generate a few questions if you have them. So just bear with me, this mouse lags a bit here, so the timing. I will on each item. It's part of the mouse issue here. So. So this map here shows the service area of Port Maitland, which is serviced by the plant. It's originally the area that was the Port Maitland Wastewater Management District. And '04, '05, '06, just prior to my time, that area was transitioned over to be serviced by the wastewater treatment plant. So anywhere in the green that you see is people that are, houses and/or properties that are either charge frontage or are connected to the system. Basically goes down just to pass what they call the lake road and then follows up through and ends just prior to the school. And it goes down through, includes Hector Street, and then down towards the Mainshore Road and ends just prior to crossing, also requires the bridge of the crick. And then our plant's located in behind the fire hall down in here. The line that you see where the mouse is over top now, that is the 100-foot setback. So in our bylaw, if someone has a property that's 100 feet back from the system, they're not, if the land permits to have an onsite septic system, they can choose so to do that. So under the Department of Environment, we have an approval to operate that plant, which is put out by the province. Under this approval to operate, this again, we just, our renewal just came through again, as you see, just recently, as of August, expiry date again is 2024. Within this document, it outlines our, I'll just try to find a spot for this mouse here. Give me a moment. It gives us our performance and our limits. It's basically what we test for to, for, within our approvals. So implement being discharged from the facility shall satisfy the following criteria. Carbonaceous biochemical oxygen demand, or we refer to it as BOD, shall not exceed 20 milligrams. Our total suspended solids shall not exceed 20 milligrams. Our E coli shall not exceed a count of 200 per 100 mils. And our pH shall stay within a range of 6 to 9. We have in-house monitoring that every time the plant puts a process through the ultraviolet disinfection, that it records that data instantaneously. And also, we're required to take quarterly samples to a registered lab for exactly, for them to test it. So it's, in a way, it's kind of double tested. It's kind of a checks and balances. So the basis of the operation, the facility is owned by Modi. And under the Department of Environment regulations, it's operated under my wastewater operating certificate qualifications. As I'm the direct, which is referred to as a DRC, the Direct Responsible Charge. Under the Act, any facility has to have that, be it a water facility, if you're supplying drinking water, if it's your collection systems, you have to have a DRC, or if it's a treatment system, you have to have a DRC. So this is a little hard to see on this, but basically what that is, is our, that's our report that goes to every year to Environment. In that, I have the list, it records all our flows per month, per day, our average totals through each, which refer to our reactors that process it, our plant total. We have to give them a breakdown of our peak flows, our, basically that's our monthly averages of our temperature and our pH, and then our quarterly averages of our BOD, our suspended solids, and our coliforms that go out through there. As you see, that our coliform limit is 200, so a lot, this is the 2017 report, our averages were in the 20s, 40s, you know, as high as 72, but your maximum is 200. So we're well within the ranges of our approvals. So this is a copy of our, from the lab. We take them up to Sonyville, to the Nova West Laboratory, does their testing for us. So this actual testing is, was prior to the, the week ending prior to the opening of the beach. So their tests were done a week prior to our tests, and theirs came back, that's the one they had when they finally opened the beach. But as you can see, our testing of that, of that particular time was, our BOD was four, our pH was 6.7, suspended solids was 7.71, and our total coliforms, which would maximum is 200, were 71. But our, our limit is the E coli, and we were only seven at that particular testing at that time. So our limit is 200, and we were seven on that. So without getting into too much detail of the process and the mechanics of it, I just want to show you, like, when the plant goes through a process, it has an ultraviolet weir where it discharges the clear liquid. And that clear liquid is what's tested and what's held in a, in a holding tank, and it's discharged on a tide valve. So on a high tide, it'll open and discharge it based on whatever the tide is at that time, it's controlled by the computer or two. So I just thought I'd give you a quick visual of what the actual decant would look like.
Netflix.
So this is the end of the ultraviolet weir during a decant cycle. So that clear water right there is all that leaves the plant. That's through the ultraviolet system. That water is what's held in the tide tank, and then that's the water that we take samples of and test. The gray piping that you see into the, into the thing there, that's our sampling, testing equipment that will sample that as it comes through that ultraviolet weir. That's just a quick snapshot of inside the plant. The plant itself is not a large, large plant by any means, as far as space goes. All our tanks are built either on the outside or, or concrete underneath the plant itself. Just inside itself, it sets the two aeration blowers, the ultraviolet system and our computer and testing equipment, and the main piping and valve work. So I, again, I'll open up the floor to some questions. If there's anything, I just wanted to try to give you, I know it's a, we could sit here for an hour and discuss the process, and I don't want to bog down in the details.
Councilor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Derek. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. What were the results while the beach was closed? You were showing us results that happened just before the beach was opened?
Yes. All ours were well, like, we had four tests during that time. They were all within either, like, anywhere from, I think it was, well, that last one was seven on the E coli, to, I think, 60 to 70, in that range.
I'm going to be perfectly blunt. There have been a lot of complaints over the years, apparently, and pictures taken of raw sewage in the harbor and going through that river. Can you say with certainty that there could not possibly be any toilet paper, or to put it bluntly, poop, coming out of that system?
Out of that, the way, the process of that plant does not allow, especially toilet paper, everything comes into the plant, is put through a grind, grinder pumps, two grinder pumps. So everything that goes from, we'll say, the raw sewage tank that goes into the process is ground up. So the physical, like a physical toilet paper, whatever, would not go through that process, no.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks. I just want to add that I have been in touch with the Environment, and they are looking at, checking out the whole area and the harbor and looking at possible other sources of raw sewage at this time. And hopefully, we'll get an answer about that at some point. Thanks.
Is there any further questions from any councilors? I have a couple, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, councilor.
And, and I know this isn't necessarily for, for you to speak to directly, but do you know of, I mean, is Environment saying anything about the, the potential cause? Is it just, is it just from natural sources, or is, or is there potentially a, like, a bacterial source in the area that's causing this issue?
From any conversations that I've had with Department of Environment, that's what they're looking towards. It's a bacterial type, just the weather and, you know, and the way the, the oceans, and they really can't, doesn't, don't seem to pinpoint it at this time. What, no, the day that I actually, we had done a tour, that afternoon, I had a spot inspection from Environment and on the process of the plant. And I just received, as of yesterday, we received our report back from them for, from their inspection, and everything was in order and acceptable to our, to our approvals from that day, so.
Any other questions?
My couple of quick questions, and I'll kind of give you both of them, then you can answer them. Backup generator at, at our plant, is there any, that's question number one. The other one is, I, it's, you showed us the, the picture of all the houses that are connected. Any of the houses that are not connected, up on the main, on the main road, et cetera, and so on, could, and I know you can't commit the outflow from their septic services, their field beds and so on, the flow down the hill all the way to the beach, it wouldn't be conceived that they would be doing any contamination. I mean, a field bed is supposed to be able to look after and so on. Any of the houses that aren't connected to our system, I think the reason why, Derek, is there's been a lot of question, well, it's the municipal, possibly the municipality's treatment plant, and I know full well that it, that it isn't, and so on. What, could any of the unattached houses cause the issue that was at the beach this summer?
That's a hard one. I can't really answer that. You know, I only know what's going on within our wastewater management district because that's what's attached to the plant, right? You know, if, is there, somebody's failing field beds outside of the district happening, I'm not sure, you know, that would be, again, that goes back to an environmental, departmental issue. Yes, we have, plant was originally built in '05, we, there was no backup generator system. This plant, the way it works, it works on aeration. There's no chemical process to it, basically, it's all biological. The aeration, as you see in that picture there, is two, two mechanical blowers that aerate the process every three hours, and then it settles for two hours, and then goes through the ultraviolet treatment. Since the other, 2007, 2008, we put a, did an expansion, put a backup generator on that just for that purpose. It's now, because we had a lot of power interruptions on the Mainshore Road, which caused us, you know, some downtime, which, because it's a natural process without aeration, you know, upsets the balance of it. So the, the generator has a huge impact on the fact that now that even during storms or any time, that there's no downtime. And it's typical that during a storm period without power, homes aren't generating sewage to us, so we're, you know, we're ahead of the game as far as when it does come back online.
I guess I just wanted that point put out there and so on. I guess we're kind of rolling on here on time, and I guess 4.2.2 is a possible open house. What is the, go ahead, councilor.
I'd like to make a request that staff have an open house so that the public in Port Maitland can come have a look at that process, if possible.
Okay. Okay. I guess that's directed to you, is that a? Well, we're in committee, so we can't make a motion. It would be a recommendation and so on. But no, I guess that would be between the CAO and the director to set up a time or whatever. That's agreeable? That's consensus of the council? Okay. Okay.
One other last thing, I just, doing some numbers on our plant in comparison to flows, HRM produces four and a half times more effluent in one hour than our plant treats in one month. So in, in the big picture, like, that is a small, small input, and it, and it is treated too, right? So it's not a, it's nothing that can, you know, cause the, the issues that was arise there, so.
It's, that treatment system that we have up there, it was, is great for communities of that size. Very fortunate to have the ocean as close what it is, and I knew that on the outgoing tides, et cetera, that's when it was always pumped out. That's why I wanted to make the mention of the backup generator. We flow 24/7, as per say, we can operate 24/7, even when there's power out, so, you know, yeah.
Mr. Chair? Sorry, if I, if I may. In speaking with the Environment, they said that the issue at the beaches was, was much bigger than, than just our treatment plant, because it was in Mavallette as well, it could have been Bartlett's, but those beaches aren't, aren't tested, but it was, it's beyond what we could have done in our area.
Yes. On that note, Derek, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Our next presentation is by TIR, Pamela Shan and Don Houston. Pamela is the area manager, and Don Houston is the operations manager. Would you be able to come down, please? You have that in your package. It's 4.1 councilors, and if you look at 4.1.1 was the concerns, and I believe they're going to give us an overview of the different programs that they have that can, I think I got the right one here, to, the different programs that can address these issues that we've put forward, so on. You're on. Go ahead, Don.
Again, we read the, what we received from Virginia, the different, the different programs that we have in place, maintenance side of it include, we've talked before about rim, rim activities, brush cutting, gravel, gravelling, ditching, those types of things. That's prioritized at our level, at, in, at the area level. We do those priorities. We have the gravel program, that's done district-wide.
Yes.
Prioritized district-wide. So again, right, this, this season, we've got Leighton Street and the Canaan Road for Yarmouth, and there's some, and the other areas as well. We have AM paving, again, that's done at our level.
Yes.
That's just a lift of asphalt that's put on a road. Again, the priorities are set at our level. And that's, as far as maintenance, that's pretty much where it goes. I mean, there's, there's local road paving, but that's usually in consultation with the construction manager, district director, and stuff like that, so. Those are the, for maintenance, we're talking maintenance, then when you get into the capital, the bigger projects, like, right now, we're doing the Wyman Road, that's capital project.
Yes.
And that's, again, at construction, people look after that, so.
Okay. With your questions from any of the councilors pertaining, go ahead, councilor.
Thank you, Don. I had some questions about the replacement of missing traffic signs, but you, your last comment was about the graveling roads and whatnot, and I do know you have a list on there, but my question to you, since you've been here longer than you're, and Pamela, is there any record of when the Bayshore Road down in Orford was ever had gravel put on it or ditched or?
What's it called, sorry?
Bayshore? Bayview? Bayview Road?
Bayview. Yeah.
Bayview.
Yeah, I can get you that. It was done with rim.
Because it's a heck of a mess, right?
Done within the last six, seven years, I would say, but I can get, it was done under rim, so yeah, we've got a record of that.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And the Cranberry Head Road too, right?
Same thing.
That ditch, it needs to be really done there a lot, right?
Ditching?
Yeah.
Now, what do you call Cranberry Head?
Cranberry Head Road? That goes up, up there? That's what it's called, right?
Off the Pembroke Road.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, some of the locals, Cranberry Head, it's our main shore in Port Maitland, people call that Cranberry Head Road.
Okay. Well, the one off of the Pembroke Road there, that's what the sign says, Cranberry Head.
I agree, but some locals don't.
Okay. Because there's a lot of water that runs down that, that hill there, and again, because now that we have the goose flats under, under control.
Yes.
You know, the drainage could be very well, very easily done.
And that would be, that would be a great candidate for rim, rim ditching.
Okay. Good.
It's, it's that good length, right?
Yep. The replacement of the missing traffic signs is a huge concern. I've, I think I've, well, I've been to your office a number of times, and the last time I was there, I was, I was asking about, you know, in my district, the other councilors can do what they wish to do, but I was more than willing to find out where the signs are supposed to be. I mean, I don't need a sign to know where I got to go, because I live in that district. But I had people complain about not having Chicagoan, North Chicagoan side, the Pembroke Blue signs, so on, so on, so on, right? If I knew where all these signs were supposed to be, I would go out and tell you yes or no, this, these ones are the ones that are missing. And at that point, I think you were saying that you were looking, at that time, TIR was looking at, doing the GPS, GIS or something?
Yeah, we're, that's down the road.
Oh, that's down the road? But that would be great to have, that information, so I can help you guys. I mean, you guys are busy. I can take my time and help you out. I don't mind cooperating here, and I'll do what I can to help.
Anybody that wants to come forward with that. Actually, we started doing some, some scouting on it. We've ordered, there's so many signs, it's just unreal. It really is.
Yeah.
I mean, we've made two orders here in the last two weeks, 50, 60 signs, and I know we're going to have probably double that before we're done.
Okay.
So, but we are in the middle of doing that right now.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of it too is, we have to physically check the site, a lot of times with all, with the alders and stuff, as bad as they are. And, you know, lo and behold, there's the signs, so.
Yeah. Because even some of the alders are growing over the speed signs and, and whatnot, makes it hurt, because that's how I got caught for speeding, Tom. That's what I use for an excuse, but I still had to pay the fine.
How'd that work for you?
Thank you.
Councilor Cunningham, go ahead.
All right. Thanks. I, I didn't, didn't get all my, didn't send off all of the lists of, of things that are an issue, but anyway, thank you for all the hard work, Don, and I know there's lots of alders. I can't believe how quickly those things grow. It's just crazy there. Like, an inch high and then they're 10 feet. It's just unbelievable.
Yeah.
So Leighton Street, thank you. That looks like a good project. I was up there this morning. Some of the residents, just to let you know, are wanting it to be cap sealed, though, and that, that was a wonderful project, Leighton Street Cemetery Road, when you did it with the cap seal, so if you could take that under consideration, and it's particularly sensitive because that section is, I know it's probably a little bit higher traffic, obviously, that, the, the first part of Leighton in the cemetery road, because obviously, people go to the park and that type of thing, and the rec park, and so, but it does leave residents wondering why that's not also being cap sealed when you're doing the gravel, and the gravel's really, really, really looks good. So thank you for that, but just wanted to let you know there is that concern.
I can speak to that. Again, that's, that's traffic volumes. So that's, that's the reason for that. We have no plans for any double chip at this time. We're actually having, we've got some concerns, but we're trying to maintain what we've got.
Okay.
So right now, there are no plans for any double chip, so.
Okay.
We, I don't want to give anybody any false hope that, you know, maybe next year or something, so, yeah.
And Lakeside Road, there's a small section you're probably aware of, right in front of Doctor's Drive there, that it's only maybe a couple hundred feet, maybe 300 feet long that's in pretty bad state of disrepair. It's all chipped and that type of thing. Just wanted to make you aware of that. The sign for Lakeside Road, I know that's only one of probably hundreds up by the manor inn. I think you replaced one going one way, but maybe not the other, if you could just check that, or I'm getting?
If it's not in, it's been ordered.
If it's not in, okay, good. Thank you.
Excuse me. Yeah, we're aware of that one.
And again, we brought this up at, when the provincial folks were down. An exit for the Greenville Road and the 101, on that overpass to better service our, our industrial park or business park, that was something that council, we've certainly written a letter to the province about that, but that's something that is a high priority for us, the, the business park development and getting, you know, traffic off our local roads and allowing the business park value to rise, because certainly, having an exit at a business park is a critical piece of infrastructure that, that we need. Dayton Road and Route 1 right there by the bridge on the Dayton Road, the very first part of it, that's really, really in, one side of the road's really in a bad state of repair, and it's scalloped out, and the water really does gather there. There's been a little bit of coal patch, but it really just needs a quick section of, like, a quick patch of pave.
Yeah, we're, that's something, it seems like we're there every month, so.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll probably get, oh, perfect. Perfect. And just a little bit about the shoulders, I've been thinking about this a little bit. And when the snowplows, and especially through Route 1 in Dayton, is the snowplow goes through every year, obviously, it doesn't get out the whole way to the, to the ditch type thing, so it, it does tend to throw up some rocks, and what you get is you get a little bit higher, almost like a curbing, and it keeps the, when it rains, it, it makes puddles. So if you could sort of slope that off, I think it would make it better for pedestrians, because we don't have sidewalks in, on that busy Route 1 yet.
What area are you speaking of?
Talking about, I guess specifically, I noticed it more from the Greenville Road to the red and white. So it's, what, what happens is, when the snowplow goes through, it, it planes down the, the shoulder, down to the road level, but then outside of that, you typically get a little, a little bit higher area.
A little richer?
Yeah. Yeah. And the water stands there, and it's just, when it, when it rains, there's nowhere for folks to walk, so if, if that could just be plane down and sloped off, so, so the, so the water runs off, that, that would be helpful. And also, this is a very, very minor thing, but there's, there's some broken pavement in the area on the edges, and it gets off, and it, and I don't know, pedestrians might, might actually, you know, they're kind of rocky chunk size, and they turn an angle or something like that.
Anything like that, if you could, just, like, civic numbers are great for us, right? If you could, if you fire that off an email or text to me with some civic numbers, and we'll get you geared up.
Very good. Can you pop off your number, number to me for texting? Yeah. And that, and that, yeah, that's, that concludes my remarks. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Must be Liz's sign there that blocks my, my.
I can see you, Jared, there. You're good there, buddy.
You see, hey, I?
I see you there.
Yeah. Okay. Good. I've made about six calls to your answering service or whatever we call now.
TIR Assist, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we can't call you direct anymore, so I've had about, I think, six calls since June, and none, none have been in the address as far as cut, excuse me for one second here. Brush cutting on side of North Ohio Road, Lake George Road, the Pintman Road, but most of the roads in the municipalities, they need, I mean, you can't see when you get off, get a, a lot of them, not all of them, but you can't see the traffic when you're getting out of your driveway.
Yeah, no, and again, if you can give us some civic addresses.
The, 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 I'm, I'm talking about the hall, all of North Ohio Road.
But I, I can tell you right now, there's no way we can do them all this year, we've already, we've already got a plan in place of what's to be done with the bushwhacker, but anything with sight distance problems for, for any residences or an intersection, I'll have the guys go and cut it by hand, but right now, besides the Lake George Road from the Brenton Cross Road through to the Hatchery Road, what you're speaking of, you won't see a bushwhacker on those this year, so if you can just get me some civic, anybody that's got any sight distance problems, we'll go there, we'll cut it out by hand.
Okay.
Yep.
Again, I lost my, one thing, this is personal, I'm sorry, but the cross, the cross, South Ohio Cross Road, I talked about paving that on my first term.
Yep.
And you remember that?
I do, yeah.
Yes, and I think the answer then was, there's not enough traffic, there's not enough houses, Leighton Street is being paved now.
No, it's.
Or whatever.
Yeah, it's under the gravel program.
The gravel program.
It's being ditched and, and gravel placed there.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That, it doesn't have as many houses or traffic as we do in the cross, South Ohio Cross Road.
I think what, if I spoke to, about traffic volumes for your road, it must have been for double chip, because as far as asphalt goes, there's no plans, any gravel roads, period, within the province, until, until we can get a handle on our existing asphalt.
Yeah, the problem, the problem with us, I don't know if you're aware, you, but it's, it's used as a, as a, as a cutoff road or.
Throwaway, yes.
A throwaway?
Yep.
By all the transports and that, and it's terrible. I wish you'd mentioned that to somebody, if possible.
For paving?
For anything, you know, if he, if you've got that, that's, that, that paving that you've got on the cemetery road there.
Double chip, yeah. Again, no plans for that right now.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand, Don, thank you.
Councillor Durbin, go ahead. Thank you, and thanks, Don, I think we've gotten some great things done in the past, and I look forward to having your response to the email with all of the requests. One of them that I neglected to include was the armor rock necessary on the entrance to the Sanford.
Rose Turkey?
Yeah, yeah, off the, yeah, off the rocks, you know, the armor rock that needs to be put up with the entrance to the fishing village of Sanford down at the war.
Yeah.
And is that, is that on the list, or?
Again, that's, that's probably one I should have spoke to with the different programs, it looks like we might be getting some funding for shoreline protection, I know we've put a priority list through to Pamela, all of us, and that was after Lobster Pound.
Yes.
If the bar goes through this year or next, but that was number two for me, so after the, the bar at, at the monument, so.
Oh, great.
But we're hoping for funding for that, again, we haven't heard anything concrete yet, but.
Okay.
It's definitely on the radar.
It's on the list, that's, that's all I need to know, thank you so much.
Yep.
How you doing? Thanks for coming in, well, same, it's always the same with me, I guess, we got some concerns, a little bit more concerns with the Melvin Road, you guys did a great job paving it last year and down towards Pickney's Point, really appreciated, on the corner, just before the intersection to Camos Hill Little River, on the lower side, it's breaking down, and we got a lot of, we're getting inefficiencies, and we, and of course, we're hearing it from, we have the new campground up around the corner, and there's a lot of concerns on that corner, just feeling that it's a little unsafe, because they're coming around that bend and.
With asphalt, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's really from there to the going down, but that corner especially, it's, yeah, it's got a grade on it, and the bottom, the bottom side that's breaking down, and people are coming around with some pretty big rigs and tractor trailers and stuff, it's, it's kind of a concern, especially for, for the first house, you're saying civic address, I'm 716, it's before me a couple numbers.
So, we're talking two or three hundred meters?
I think so, yeah.
Be a good candidate for the rim?
Yeah.
For all the smog on the road.
It's right there, it's just, I mean, we have fish plants running in Pickney's Point, fish plants running Little River.
Yeah, they're gonna start to pick up here now.
And the tractor trailers, and, and the first house right after, there's a little concern that when one of them goes off that corner, it's, it's coming into their yard.
Okay.
Other than that, it's, you know, Pleasant Lake Arcadia area, again, we're hearing the mobiles, I'm pretty sure you know where I am, again, a few hundred meters, four or five hundred meters.
Yeah, our structures, people have looked at that, you know, I, I think there's been some tests been done, but I haven't heard anything back. I know we've thrown a bunch of different things at that, I mean, we had done French drains, we've done, anyhow, they're looking at it, it hasn't worked yet.
It seems to get a little, it gets a little worse in the spring, and then kinda, it's still not good.
About this time of year, you start to forget about it, right?
And then the fall's gonna come, and the winter's gonna set in, and then again, we've got Kenny Hill Road, and I noticed the Pet Road is, they're both, they're both a mess.
Yeah, the Kenny Hill is slated for next year, I believe, for AM paving, so that's gonna be done.
Okay.
I saw that on the list, I was surprised at that, because we've done the Pet Road over like a three-year span with rim, so is there, there are portions?
It's just busting out, it's potholes everywhere, it's busting.
Gotcha.
From, from one, from one end to the other, really, it's, it's all.
I can get at that remedial, yeah, some remedial work there with some hot mix.
Yeah, and of course, we've talked before about Mill Creek Road, but I think, I don't know how that ever got asphalt, a little bit of asphalt on it before, I would almost think that would be more of a candidate to go back to gravel.
Again, as a municipal road, usually the, we'd have to talk about some cost sharing, maybe.
Does that, is that, is that one of our roads? Is the Mill Creek one of our roads?
I believe that's a J-class road, yeah, so that's, but I mean, we were out there, we did the worst section, like the further end where everybody lives, we did that section, it was two or three hundred meters with hot mix.
Yeah.
I spoke with a few of the locals, and they were somewhat happy with that.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yep.
And other than that, I'm back, it's just signage, I just, I noticed I went, so I've been through Digby a couple times, it seems like they have a ton of new signs everywhere, new posts, new signs.
Digby did well with their capital work there, they, contingency money there for the, the new section of highway, it's making us all look bad.
So, I just wondered if that was coming our way anytime soon.
Like I say, we just, two huge orders and more to go, right?
Awesome.
So, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, Don.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you, Pamela.
Thanks to meet you too.
Thanks very much for coming in, Donnie, the, the Cannon Road is, is starting to come along, I was kinda hoping that it was gonna be paved the whole way through, but.
Paved? No.
But you just got finished saying that there's gonna be no new pavement, until you get your handle on the, however, the, what you have repaired there, it has worked quite well, the ditching and stuff like that, and I'm gonna keep continuing on my theme of dirt roads, I've been getting a lot of complaints about lack grading and lack of chloriding, it's, and especially it be coming from the Lake Anis Road, some of the not-so-well-used roads, like, I'm trying to think of the name, the Holly Road is, is another one that goes through Brazil Lake, but a lot of the complaints I've been hearing a lot lately is, is the Lake Anis Road. I, I traveled that road here just Sunday, and it, it's, it's, it's rough in some sections, in some sections, it, it's very dusty, in other sections, it's not, so, is there a, a plan that you guys have in regards to chloriding, or is that on an as-needed basis?
No road that's graded has, is, doesn't have chloride on it afterwards.
Oh, okay, and something else I just wanted to quickly touch on, because I know you guys have to go, is, is spring, spring road closures? Now, this year, where we had a, what some would say an unusual winter, but unusual seems to be usual here lately, is, is the road closure seemed to happen too late, and, and by the time that the road closure does come, that the, the roads are already really rutted up badly, and then when, when you reopen them, they've been dry for, for a month or two, so is there something that, that we could possibly do, I, I don't know how your road closures work, even after all these years, but is there something that we could possibly do, like close ours a little bit earlier and open them a little bit earlier, whereas other parts of the province are, are not freezing the ground as quickly as we are?
I can speak on to closing them, the opening part, I mean, we, we can, at Pamela's level, we can close a road at any time, we can put a weight restriction on any gravel road, you know, if we get wind of, you know, some abnormal activity going on at night with logging, I, I hate to pick on logging trucks, these guys have.
Yeah.
They have to make their, their living as well, but if roads are being torn up, we can shut them down at that time, and that's done at our level, we can institute it, I mean, we decide if it's gonna be fourteen tons, so a school bus can get over it, or if it's gonna be ten tons, so that nobody can get over it, except for a small vehicle, we can do that at our level, I, I think in the past, I'm trying to remember, anybody that gets wind of that, you just, again, fart off an email, we'll be there, in the wintertime, we're there twenty-four, seven, so I guarantee you, we'll have somebody there right away, because it's just astronomical, the, what it's costing us for these trucks.
Yeah.
We'll close them, as far as opening them, that's, that's done throughout the province, you know, that's.
The closing would be good.
So, again, no problem for us to close them, and even if it's January, that it's, we have to close them for a couple weeks and reopen them, that, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
But that being said, as far as formal spring weight restrictions, that comes from the province, so when they decide, it's, you know, they start to look at moisture contents, that's, that's what it goes, but it's not frost level.
Yeah.
And, and usually, a lot of people think the roads are good, that they should be opened up a little bit sooner, but again, it's moisture levels, it's not whether or not the frost has come out of the ground, so.
Okay, oh, really, I, I didn't know that, I always thought it was when the frost was coming up, because that's when they always seem to do the, the most tearing up.
Yeah, I know, with, with the moisture in it, that's, it makes it very unstable underneath, and that's when, that's when you get all your, all your damage onto the asphalt, so.
Okay, you're done.
Yeah, I know, they have to go, and you, just quickly, you mentioned about sending off an email, now, do we do that through the, the one where, where the province, the call center, is that the way we do it?
Virginia's got an email, yeah, just, you can fire off an email to, you know, that's the easiest way.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause actually, even though Gerard said it didn't work, I find that the call center actually works quite well, because there's been a couple spots, I said, here, try this number, I said, make sure you leave your phone number, your email address, your, your civic number, and a couple spots that, that there's been complaints of sight line distances, you have had your crews out there to clear them, and they said, well, what did you do, John, you go do it yourself, I said, no, but, but it has been, it has been working, I, I do have to give credit where credit is due.
Again, it's, it's documented and it's official then, right?
Yeah, and that's what I've been saying.
I can't say, no, I didn't take that call, it's, it's on there, and it's, right.
And that's what I've been saying, because a, a ticket is made whenever they call, stuff like that, so I do have to say that that has been working, and I've been referring people to that number, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Cushion, I'm not gonna turn you back on, because they have to leave at ten, two, and I got a couple of minutes, and I have a couple of questions, not for Don, but it's for Pamela, in, in, in the, in the future, when there's gonna be some paving done of, of roads, I would like to see that the municipality is notified, I'll tell you the reason why, because we have active transportation, and maybe we could partner with, and I'm not saying on every road, but maybe on, on certain roads, maybe interested in putting in a bike lane and so on, at the time that you're doing some of this through active transportation, the worst I can say to you is, no, we're not interested, or no, it's not a road where we get a lot of traffic, but my one concern, and I'm addressing it to you, is, and Councillor LeBlanc brought it up, is the mowing and so on of the shoulders. I, in my area, have a lot of people that go out and walk, and as of today, there's areas where they can walk on the shoulder, because a good majority of residents do go out and mow the shoulder of the road in front of their house, and, and it makes their, their property look a little better and so on, but there's a large area that don't get mowed, and the grass is quite high, we live in rural, where there's deer and raccoons, et cetera, and so on, that can come out at night, my question to you, and you don't mean to answer it directly today, but through the CAO, is there anything that the municipality can do in writing of a letter requesting, no disrespect, Don, extra machinery to mow the sides of the road, I know you have a lot of kilometers, and there's two sides to every road, so you go up it, and you gotta come back down it, that we could assist in, in a letter writing or something to request an, an extra piece of equipment or something in the summertime, because I have a lot of residents that just knock on my door, and they, they'll, you know, when is it gonna be mowed? Well, maybe by the end of September and so on, but they're out walking every day, I have a lot of people that walk seven days a week.
Yeah.
And that is a concern of theirs, I've got some runners and so on, so I, I, that's a concern, and that's something I, I wish you could, could address, maybe you can talk a little bit about it before you leave, but if it's something you could address to the CAO, maybe in the near future, so.
I, I know, like, it's a concern everywhere, it's not just this municipality, we do do cover some with our bushwhacker, well, under the rim program, and some other in-house cutting. With this year, with the Hundred Series, we were given extra money.
Yes.
But the problem is, our tractor, we only have one tractor for the whole county.
Oh, yeah.
It's in Crawford and it ain't leaving.
Pardon me?
It's in Crawford and it ain't leaving, and I'm gonna make yours stay there.
It's gonna do the Trump's Hundred Series, Trump's Roots first, and then we go on to the.
Yes, no, I, I realize that, but I didn't know if, you know, like I say, if you could have that conversation, I know we're trying to set up quarterly meetings, Don, I appreciate that, and so on, that'll be very beneficial, and so on, in, in the future, but if that's something, like you say, you can have that discussion, because I'll put the bug into Victoria's ear and so on along that night. On that note, it, it is ten to eleven, and I know you folks have to go, appreciate very much coming in and going over that.
So, Victoria will get the email address, that, you know, something direct here, I have it on all the time.
Yeah.
Good luck with that.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, quit throwing your beer cones on my lawn when you draw it.
Yes, yes, we could. Okay, at this time, Alan isn't here, he's gonna be about five minutes out, can we jump down to item number five, five point one, Letter of Response from Transportation and Infrastructure Renewal, Phase Two Funding for the Completion of Highway 101, there is their response and so on, which is in your package, which is, there's nothing in the near future, and there is our original letter, is there any discussions or questions on the five point one? Hearing none? Five point two, Letter of Response from the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Potential Meeting, Original Letter from Modi and so on, and I have to apologize, I did not read that myself, so.
That's the letter we sent him.
Yes, and was there the response back from them, I apologize, I didn't read it, so what is?
So, five, five point one was the response to five point two.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay, okay, no, no, that's quite all right, that's quite all right, the other thing I'm gonna throw out to you councilors, provincial highways is not our responsibility, and I've had some people come and mention to me, you know, seven four two forty-four forty-four, you tell them to call that number and leave their complaint, whether it's bushmowing, whether it's a sign, whatever it is, that is your MLA, you can also do your follow-up by calling if you wish and so on, but I've been told, put them back on to the, to the councillor that's responsible, and that's our MLA, and let him call them and try work on some of this stuff, okay, I just, I'm, not respect, yes. So, we'll move into new business, six point one Splash Park, Warden Anthony. So we'll move into new business, 6.1 Splash Park, Warden Anthony. Just to, I won't say a quick update, but that is an ongoing project and so on. That is a committee of itself. I believe Frank, I think, still goes to the meeting, but only as for support person. The Recreation Department is not taking the lead. They are not the project themselves. That is a certain committee. There has been a couple of places, I guess, put forward so far. One was the Mariner Center and there was one other organization that kind of put their name out there that they'd be willing to entertain a splash park. I don't know if we're going to be discussing that today. I don't think so. No, not on the agenda. But it's a project that is still moving forward and so on. And I know Counselor Cunningham brought it before council three years, four years ago. Trevor, you've been down to the States and seen one and so on, and you'd mentioned. So it's something that is moving Let's do, okay. Alan, you may as well go right to the mic.
Keep going. Do one more correspondence.
No, you need some time?
Set it up.
Oh, okay. Okay. 6.2, NSFM Board Reports, the Board Incentives Report. You have that. Was there any questions or concerns on 6.1? You folks read that and so on, what they're doing and so on? No questions on any of their... 6.3, Sponsorship Request. You had that in your package and that is by Ignite. You've seen that and there is a request. Was, did the grant request get in?
Yes.
It hasn't. Yeah. We haven't received it yet. So what you read in the information that was given to you, was there any questions, concerns, and would you be interested in doing any type of a sponsorship? They had three levels, 500, 1,000, or 2,000. There is some money still in our grant contingency, or if you wanted to go really overboard, you could go into next year. But go ahead, Victoria. You can answer her.
So if I can, Mr. Warden and Council, Ignite Labs, led by Doug Jones, I met with them, had a tour of the lab. It's an innovation center where they're going to use technology to leverage innovation, new products, research and development. So it could be, it could be a widget that you build, or it could be a technology item. And Ignite Labs in our region is partnering with Cove, and that is how businesses and entrepreneurs in our region will get involved in the Atlantic Fisheries Fund and in the Ocean Supercluster piece. So one of the visions of the Ignite Board is to increase the participation of women in the sciences and in the ICT sector and whatnot. So this particular pitch challenge is designed specifically for girls and women around the ocean's industries. And so what they're trying to do is to create scholarships so that people can continue their work and continue their studies in that field. There are a number of options that are listed there. And obviously, you know, the most important one for the individuals who would be competing would be a cash scholarship to continue on. But there is, there are also opportunities for individuals to mentor young entrepreneurs and young researchers. And of course, there might be an opportunity to judge. So there are many ways that as individuals, council can participate. And there is a meaningful way financially that council can participate and continue to foster our youth to be innovators and leaders in our ocean economy in our community.
What would be the wishes of council? Do you wish to participate, et cetera, and so on? Go ahead, Counselor Durkey.
Thank you. Considering that we are highly interested in keeping our youth here, I think this is a really valuable project. And I would like to recommend that we support the event with cash, let me try that again, sponsorship of $500.
Okay. That you're recommending. We can't make motions.
No, I know. That's my recommendation.
Is there any further discussion or consideration from any of the other councilors and so on? What is your thoughts and so on?
I'm agreeing with that.
Yeah. I spoke, if I may, I spoke with Doug and had a conversation with him and so on here the other day. And I believe it's, as Counselor Durkey stated, keeping young people. But it is how we support them to be possibly becoming entrepreneurs, going into a course in university and so on that pertains to the fishing industry or whatever industry they wish to go into. And on the 17th of October, they have to make their presentation before a board. I think there's the possibility, you know, maybe the municipality might be able to be present to listen to some of these and/or be one of the people that judge it and so on. Counselor Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The Ocean Tech Challenge for Young Women, because we are strongly supported by the fishing and other ocean activities, I believe it's important that we do support this. But as for the $500, I'm not quite sure if that's what we should do. I'd rather see $1,000 being spent on this because of the new thing that's being upstarted here. And I do know Doug Jones and I know that he's very active to try to make things happen. So I think the more that we can support that, and then if you're looking down at supporting with in-kind contribution, I don't know what would be, what would that involve. And so I think it's very important. Personally, I think $1,000 would be, would be the way to go with this particular project. And then from that point on, then we can try to balance something out from year to year or anything if they're looking for that. So that's my part. That's my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Durkey again?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to mention that I attended the RENS conference on Thursday, and these are the RENS across the province. And the focus is on innovation. And so this fits in perfectly, particularly in our area. And I certainly would support an increase in the donation if everybody else agreed to it.
I'm sorry, I was...
Said I would support an increase in the scholarship if everybody else agreed to it.
Okay. We can have some further discussion from staff on that. Go ahead, Counselor.
I would support the $1,000 figure. I think that's a, that's a more fitting number. 500 would be good, but I think because of the importance and the connection to the fishery and it checks all the boxes for council to commit to that. So absolutely. Thank you.
Was there any further discussion on that amount? Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
I'd rather not fix a dollar amount on this. I do agree that it's a good project. However, I think a little bit more discussion in regards to how this is going to fall under our policy in regards to grants would be in order before we set a dollar figure. I do believe it should move forward to regular council for a decision and a dollar figure put in. But I also stress to my fellow colleagues that we follow our grants policy as well, see if that falls under the, what the intent of our grants are. And also, I guess this would be a question through you, Mr. Chair, to CAO, how much money is left in their grants contingency?
Of the contingency, we've only awarded $500.
Okay. Thank you very much. But I am in agreement of at least moving this forward to a regular council for a decision.
Do you want to say something, Counselor, or?
No.
Okay. At this time, I guess, I don't know what the timeline is. I know that they're going, I think, the first of this week to pitch it to the high schools and so on and to the young people. Then they have to put all this together and then the, I guess, the awards or when they make their presentation, they're awarded. And that's on October 17. And I just spoke in with Victoria about the in-kind, not sure what that meant. Was that meaning, you know, helping out with being a judge, helping out with just refreshments? I wasn't sure. But I did speak with, as I stated, with Doug and so on. And I didn't know, as I told him, I didn't know where council would be. I was very comfortable with a $500 donation. As it is a late thing, but it was something they came up with very late, thought and so on. And I'm not sure. So I, we have a recommendation right now for $1,000. You also have from the deputy warden pertaining to wanting not to make a commitment now, but make, move to the end of the month meeting to make a motion and a commit to a fund. Now, I'm not sure. You folks have the floor. Do you wish to do that and then put a fund on it? Or do you want to go with the recommendation of $1,000 at this time? What is your desire? Go ahead, Counselor.
I would like to move forward immediately at this meeting if it's possible because I see that they, the teams are pitching on October 17. So I'm sure that, sure the organizers would like to know, it's only a month away, what kind of funding they have to offer for prizes.
Okay. Okay. So I guess I'm going to ask, is that the feeling? Go ahead, Counselor.
Well, I agree with Counselor Durkey on that. You know, certainly I understand what John is coming from also. But because of this particular situation, I'm certainly supporting $1,000. So whether it's now or end of the month.
Okay. Go ahead.
If I could, Mr. Warden. So just to remind council that council meets next Wednesday. So I've already emailed Mr. Jones and asked him to make sure he gets the grant application in advance of next Wednesday so that council can debate and ratify their decision. I've also asked him about in-kind contributions and participation at the pitch event.
Go ahead, Counselor Alan.
Yes, I'm more inclined to go with Counselor Cunningham on this. And I'd like to get the in-kind, a little more information on the in-kind. And if our meeting's only next Wednesday, then it's only one week. I think we'd be, we'd be well, I think it's due diligence on our part.
Okay. I'll have a tendency to agree with you on that and so on. So right now, I guess it's three to, three to four?
Three to four.
Well, you, me, and...
I'll go with John.
Okay. Then it's four to three, next week. Okay? That's fine with you folks? Okay. You've got yourself some extra work for Wednesday. Okay.
Mr. Jones does.
No, that's fine. Just let me mark it in here. On that note, CAO, Alan, are you ready or?
Ready when you are.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Ward.
4.3, Alan Muse, interim airport manager per the airport update. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. So airport update. So first of all, we had one of our board meetings moved. We will be rescheduling the board meeting as soon as possible. So just so that everybody's aware, we did have one less meeting in the summer just because of schedules and vacations, et cetera. Right now, the biggest issue that the airport is facing is the repair and retrofit of 0624, which is our primary runway. We have awarded the work to Atlantic Paving, I believe they're out of Bedford. My Public Works Director, Hans, is leading the project along with Tim Robichaud, who would be our airport supervisor of runway repair maintenance. So that work is expected to be completed by October 30 of this year. They will be coming in this week to do an assessment. So two or three things that might be of interest to you, that might be a little operational, but I believe equally interesting to you is when we initially did some crack repairs, we, or the previous contractor opened a swath quite large in order to accommodate their own equipment to repair these cracks. So the, that was a fairly large undertaking. So of course, when you cut out, you also have to pave a larger amount. So part of the work was to establish what was the actual requirements, technical requirements. And so to be less technical and to come to the conclusion of, we came to the conclusion that we did not have to cut as much out and still maintain the compaction that was required by the runway, by operations, which means we can fix more with less money. That's basically what it means. So Atlantic Paving is going to come in. Their mobilization's very expensive, but their repair is very, very reasonable. The idea is that we will get them to do as many as possible. They also have the ability to do the preventative maintenance, the preventative maintenance work around some of these cracks so that some of these don't become a problem in the future. Our plan is to spend more than what we budgeted. And because, for two reasons. Number one, we have at least a $20,000 amount of funds that we did not expect. That was thanks to Ron and myself going to the municipality of Shelburne and Barrington, asking them for assistance and them graciously accepting and giving us a contribution that we did not. But four, also, there's another capital project that will not occur. So our idea is that we maximize the amount of runway repair we have while we have this organization mobilized to do the work. So that's the plan. So I think, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with the results. We hope so. The other update I would provide to you is with the closure of 0624 last year, we learned something fairly interesting, which will have an impact potentially on winter operations. The NAV can and Transport Canada, if you close a runway for more than six months...
Don't go there.
They purge the data on the runway. What, how does that impact us? It impacts us that it takes a while in order to restore that information. It's not that the runway doesn't exist. It still exists. You can still land on the runway. You can still do all of these things. However, it does have an impact on winter. And so there's a, there's a possibility that the winter, that 0624, our main runway, will be a fair weather runway this year. Meaning it will, and the reason why that is, is the instrument landing system is not recognized by Transport or NAV. And if it's not recognized, then it cannot be used. So in less than fair weather, weather, planes will not be able to utilize that runway. So on the question of which runway we should use in the winter, should we maintain one or should we maintain two? In fact, it looks like it's going to be one, not of our choosing. Now, that being said, 1533 is often the choice of many pilots in the winter. So it is the preferred runway for the winter, for the fair winds, for the, as the winds are blowing. It doesn't mean 0624 is closed. It means it's probably a fair weather runway, which means it will be an improvement from last year at least, but not 100% too open. Now, there is another, you know, from our perspective, there is a strategic conversation that needs to happen around what the future of the airport might be in the first place. And maybe the future is one runway. But that conversation has to happen by the owners and also by the board. So those are the major projects that we are working on right now. We have, as you may know, have rented additional space. We had, I don't think I need to talk about the production that rented space. That's almost old news now. We do have a manufacturing company that is, has rented the former fire station location in our combined services building. So right now, he's early in his, in his operation, but that will jump up to market rates in February. Right now, he's paying a less than, less than market rate in order to encourage the establishment of that organization at that location. And we managed to reduce costs... And we managed to reduce costs this year by a considerable amount. I would like to, before the end of this year, calendar year, project what next year might look like for the owners so that you can prepare. I do, I would like to politely remind this group that, and I'm taking, I think, a little bit of the interim manager hat off and putting the CAO hat on, there is a four-year agreement that is in its fourth year. And so the CAOs and the council owners of the airport will have to sit down and take a look at what that means for them in terms of renewal and all the, all the work that needs to be done associated with that. So rather than go on and on about the rest of the potential things that are happening at, at the airport, I would stop there and perhaps ask if there are any questions or if there's any particular piece of information that you would like to, to know more about the airport.
Councillor LeBlanc, go ahead.
This is, Alan, this is something different than what you've been talking about. Is the airport terminal for rent to the public?
The actual terminal building itself?
Yes.
There are offices that are available for rent, yes.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I was told that there was four events there in the terminal itself this summer.
Oh, you mean like, like a day event, like where they use the main?
Or evening.
Yep. Yes, we have rented the main terminal for those purposes. We had some receptions and some awards ceremonies for that big, particularly as you enter the terminal, we have rented that facility more than once.
Yes, yes, I was at one Saturday night, this, this past Saturday. So I was just, it's, I'm sure it's not a big moneymaker, but it's a...
No.
It can pay some, something.
Sure. No, it's not a big moneymaker, but it is a community...
So it is available to the public?
It is. We typically, you know, it depends on the, on the event, obviously, like, we don't, we don't have like, you know, there's certain, obviously, if you have alcohol and all these other things, there's certain things that we have, we can and can't do at that location. But we have entertained quite a few different...
Yes.
Groups there for sure.
And who, who did they contact? Yourself?
No, they would contact the airport proper, they would contact Sheila Sorette...
Okay.
At the airport. And all that information, well, all that information will be on the website, once the website is, there's a slight error right now, but it will be online like momentarily. So once that gets, all that information will be on the website.
Okay, thank you, Alan. You're welcome. Councillor Cunningham, go ahead.
Right. Has there been any conversation with other levels of government, including yourselves even, about the re-establishment of a, of a, I know there's a lot of charter service that comes into the airport, it's fairly busy that way. Any, any hope on the horizon of a regularly scheduled service, like the service that was going to Portland, Maine? Any, any, where are we with that? Or maybe comment just briefly on that?
Absolutely. The answer to your question is yes, we've had conversations with MP and MLA on, not the restoration of passenger service, but the restoration or retrofit of the, of the, of the airport. We cannot do passenger service the way we are right now. We are not 302 certified and we won't be unless we do some major retrofits. We believe that we can get 302 certified if that was the, if that's the intention of the board and the owners. We can achieve that if we get a complete retrofit of the lighting and the runway of O624. Now, that being said, that's approximately an eight to $10 million project. The lights are about 15 years past their useful life. And, and the runway, while is usable at this point, we cannot jump up to 302 based on its current status. Now that being said, to jump to 302, you also have to understand that there's approximately $250,000 in operating costs that you would incur where you're not incurring that now. So, and I, and I, I mean, obviously, that number can be plus or minus 50,000, but you will need a full-time safety management system, which takes a full-time person. You would need a full-time airport manager. And even if you achieve 302 status along with the regulatory framework that is associated with that, it still doesn't guarantee that you'll actually get regular passenger service. Our, our, the conversations that we have at the board are as follows. They've basically, the board has basically moved away from the thought that we're going to get passenger service restored there on a regular basis. They see chartered flights as a potential, a more reasonable recommendation. So, meaning, now, now this work has not commenced yet, but, but the work that would be involved with that would be to engage directly with some of our chartered flights and try to, try to entice them to either, that we can either generate some business for them for leisure travel, or, or that they could potentially take a look at partnering with us to try to take a chance and come in and out of different communities on a, on a more regular basis. Now, the regulatory framework around chartered flights is slightly different than the passenger service. Chartered flights can land regularly, that does not make them a regular passenger service. So, so there's a slight nuance there that we should be aware of. So the long answer to your question is without the capital, we're, we have no chance. And so if we have the capital, then we'd have to decide whether or not that is in fact a decision we should be making. Our history has told us that if we subsidize a passenger, passenger service will, you can re-establish passenger service in, at the Yarmouth Airport. Where you fly will be up to you. And it will depend on the amount of subsidy that you're willing to pay for when the seats aren't full. So that's, and our history has shown, and our analysis has shown, that that could cost between 180 and $300,000 a year, the subsidy. Obviously, that depends on how long you want to fly the, the plane, and it depends on your objectives. If your objective is to have a regular scheduled service moving 1,000 people a year in order to get a cap funding to do additional work on your airport, then obviously that costs you more because you have to maintain that every day, or not every day, but regular passenger service. Getting to 1,000 people is easy, you can get, you can do that, no problem. It's the cost to get there. Welcome.
If not, I just have a couple of quick ones. When will the Atlantic paving, I kind of got the impression they're going to be started, they're down this week to kind of do an inspection and within a week or so, Alan, they'll be able to start this project?
Yes, I believe they're planning on coming within a week to have the initial site investigation.
Okay, well, that's good. I'm glad that...
Sorry, the contract says the work will be done by the end of October.
That's good. I'm glad to hear that. Just I, I think we have a airport meeting in October, don't we? I have my calendar fills up, so, and I, I think...
I don't recall the date.
I think, I think, I'm trying to get into my... I have it on October 2nd, I don't know if that's...
That's what I have as well.
Okay. Then I'm, then I'm bang on, my calendar's right for...
So we have a meeting on October 2nd.
Yeah, I, I think it's important and so on, that's a lot of good information at that meeting. My only one other concern that I have, and I shouldn't call it a concern, it's been a real dry summer. And I know, I'm going to say the back 40 is usually pretty wet for bushmowing and so on and trimming. And I want to tell you, three years ago, we had a, my kid gone and got a summer student, whatever, from the, from surveying or something, and they'd done a lot of brush cutting around the airport along route number three on the inside of the fence. Be a good time for the guys to be able to get around back without too much, without too much problems, A, to do some of that hand bush cutting and so on along the back fence and so on that.
It's funny you say that, Warden, as I was driving into the airport this morning, that's, I'm pretty sure that's what they were doing.
Okay.
They're either, they're either doing it or they're on their way to do it.
Okay.
And my concern was, geez, I hope there isn't any sort of like spark.
Yeah, right.
It's so dry.
It is very dry and so on, and that could be another reason. But no, if there's no further questions, Alan?
Thanks. Just one other comment I'd like to make, I want to thank you for your confidence to accept me as interim manager for the airport. You realize I do have another job, at least another one. And so I just, I wanted to thank you for, for that because I felt, I felt supported in that decision by your council. And, but that, that, that has a sunset and, and that sunset is happening. And so the CAO group has been talking about a job description and how we're going to move forward. We haven't come to the end of that, but, but my term will be ending potentially sooner than we can make that decision. So I just wanted to express my gratitude for the confidence that, that you clearly displayed in your verbal and non-verbal response.
Good learning experience. You never know, you might apply for a job as a manager at Alberta or anywhere like that, one of them big airports, hey, you got the experience now.
Sure, that's exactly what I have on my mind. Yeah, that's next on my list, yeah. The Quinnen Airport, yes. Yeah, that's where I got my experience initially, actually.
Again, thank you very much, Alan. Appreciate the information.
Thanks.
4.4, John Varell and Jeff Guishu, Fire Protection Services, 1120. We're five minutes behind, but, and also in your package, you have 4.4.1, which was a fire service information sheet. And that was information that was sent out here, I'm going to say a week and a half ago or so, pertaining to a lot of good information from the Yarmouth Fire Department and so on. As long as mine will open up here. We had a little bit of rain last, well, I say last evening, I won't call it rain, we had a little bit of moisture. And I, and I look out there and I, I think it's probably all evaporated now, and it's been a dry summer, very dry, very dry. On that note, I'll start off. I want to thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming in. My fellow councillors have had some, they like to have some quick information on, on a couple of topics and so on. I see where you supplied, I guess you answered some of their questions before they had the chance to ask you directly and so on, which is really good. But I am going to open the floor to any one of my fellow councillors if they'd like to have some questions and so on. And I'm not sure if any of the staff may have some questions thereafter. The floor is open to you as councillors. Do you have any? Go ahead councillor.
Yes, and, and one of the issues that's come up with the fire service is the lack of a, of a contract between the town of Yarmouth and the municipality of Yarmouth. We've had conversations about that, so I think that we should, we should have that contractual understanding with regard to the various service developed, you know, in the near term. And just looking, just looking for an update from the fire service, given that we do pay a pretty considerable amount for fire protection, and it's good fire protection, and, and we have a lot of volunteers that are municipal residents working with the, with the town service that also serves our municipality. And want to thank you for all, all the hard work of, of the paid staff and the, and the volunteers and the cooperation. My only disappointment is that I hoped Mr. Guishu would come in a red uniform or something like that today for, for fire uniforms, so. So in any event, no, looking forward to your presentation and, and just wanted to do our due diligence around, you know, having you update us as to what, what service you are providing. Are there any, are there any issues regarding fire protection that you feel are issues that need to be addressed with the municipality of Yarmouth? So I'm assuming that all the protections being afforded our residents, it's required, and just wanted to confirm that here at the, at the meeting today.
Do you wish to address, like, we had your, your information and so on, but did you have a presentation that you wanted to make or anything of that nature?
For me, I don't have any other presentation other than the information, I tried to generate some questions from that information I sent in. There's nothing outside of the norm right now of a normal operating procedures and stuff that we're doing that we have issues with. That'll be regularly reported on my reports going to my council and town. But I haven't anything other than what I've written, if you guys have any questions about anything I've written and...
Councillor Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, kind of pertains to equipment and stuff. District 2, I have Pickney's Point, Melbourne, Cozen Lake, that area. We have a few dry hydrants, I think essentially a pond. Can you, do you have a way of accessing them? Like, are you equipped to use the dry hydrants? And if so, are there any that you know of that maybe we as a municipality should be making sure you have good access to in case, in case you need them? Is that on your radar of any kind?
It's not on my, my maintenance radar. Hydrants don't fall under me. But my, my people do know where all the hydrants are, and we do get access to them all the time, we do training on them. Last year, we took a number of them, we went out and we back flushed them and, and did some training on them. But other than that, we've had, myself, I've had no issues with any of them, other than the one down in Arcadia, and that's, that's handled by the Department of Highway, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's salt, that's the salt water.
Yeah, well, I just, we had a fire in Pickney's Point last, I want to say winter, and it was just kind of brought to my attention that you guys, could you access, could you access that pond or was there no need to?
I, I, no, I'd have to, I'd have to look at particulars of that, of that call and read up on it and see what was done and so on.
And they would know, so it would be your responsibility to go back flush these or?
No, no. We just do, a normal operating procedure for fire, for most fire departments is that when you hook to a dry hydrant, back flush first.
Yeah.
That way you don't get any particular or anything like that inside the engine or inside the pumps or stuff like this. That's a regular engineering thing to do.
Okay.
Now, on a regular basis, we don't go out and physically do that, the fire department, they don't fall under the fire department.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Deputy Warden?
Yes, thank you very much for coming in. My question, I guess I should have referred to Alan when he was here, in regards to the renting out of the, the building where they house the equipment there for aircraft rescue, rescue firefighting at the airport. Now, you wrote here, the Yarmouth Fire Department will provide assistance to the Yarmouth Airport Authority during an emergency, emergency situation regarding the airport rescue firefighting. That assistance will be in the form of providing firefighting and rescue using human resources and equipment currently used in the department. Specialized equipment and personnel training to the Canadian Aviation Regulations is not available within the Yarmouth Fire Department. Now, I do know that they still have some of the equipment out there, some of the large trucks. Now, what would the, not only the volunteer response to a fire or possible airplane crash, heaven forbid, what would be our role in, in that, including the Yarmouth Fire Department?
Well, basically, for aircraft rescue and firefighting, there are standards that CARs has, and we will not be able to, are you hearing me okay? And we won't be able to meet any of those standards at CARs because we don't hold regular trainings on a monthly basis. We don't do the training that needs to be done, we don't have the equipment or the budget to be able to do something like that. So basically, what I was trying to tell everybody is that we're going to handle every situation that we can with what we have currently available. So as an example, the airport truck itself, the firefighting package, to be able to test that and to be able to do it the proper way, because the environmental controls and stuff that are in place now, it'd be outside of my budget level to be able to do something like that. So you would have to use that as a backup to what we know does work. Because you don't want to get out to a scene, especially an aircraft crash, with people all over the place with a truck that may not work because a firefighting package hasn't been tested, so.
All right, you talked about hazardous materials. Let's say for... All right, and you talked about hazardous materials, like say, for example, jet fuel, if that would fall, I would take it under, under hazmat, correct?
Yeah, depending upon the circumstance, when you get on the scene, if there's jet fuel. But also, there's also other issues with types of aircraft when it comes to different types of materials used to make the aircraft, things like this. Normally, when there's a crash, the first thing is the, is the life. You do what you can to preserve life, and then you take care of the environment separately.
Okay, I'm going to switch a little bit to, to in regards to hazmat. Now, how, how large of a situation can your department handle in that regard? Like, would it just be like containment of, of an area, then would we call in the provincial authorities? Or, or how exactly would that work in that regard?
There, there's about three levels, specifically three levels of hazmat control. There's, there is awareness, operational and tech level. We said that about the operational level right now, so if we had a large incident of any type, and it's got to be hydrocarbons, because we don't have anything else other than handling hydrocarbons, we would go, we'd isolate the scene, insulate the fuel if it was fuel, and then call the authorities in from the province.
Okay, and you're talking about hydrocarbons, okay, what about, say, like, like chlorine gas? I, I'm not sure if, if it's used in, in any of the cooler facilities around here for loft or holding facilities. Is there any? I guess inventory that's been taken by, by the department to know where, what is where? Like, whether they use chlorine, whether they use ammonia in that regards?
Yeah, we don't have an inventory ourselves, that, that would be provided by the companies and stuff that do, that do use it. And a lot of the companies and businesses around here do send us information. And when we have that information, we'll put it in our system, and then that'll be readily available if we need that information. But I don't have an actual list of every hazmat material that's around here, no I don't. And to do, to do something like that, that take on a budget outside, I definitely, or size, I definitely need manpower to do that, and I need, you know, a budget to be able to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Trevor? Trevor, I see you here on my, on my thing, eh, you don't need to, go ahead.
I'm very disappointed with the Yarmouth Fire Department. Because you, I, I've, I've got a fire hydrant right next to my house, and you used to flush it. This summer, my lawn is dry, and you never flushed it once.
Don't ask.
We also do training, by the way.
That was your, your, your question?
If I may, that's, that's a great opening to, and I know you were, you were kidding, but it is, it is our public works department that does the fire hydrant maintenance, and we used to do a twice a year flushing program because of the, I guess, the condition of the system required it. We made a decision the last year or two to just go to once a year because the quality, the condition of the system is so much better. So, unfortunately, it's not going to help you with your lawn, but it is good news in terms of the quality of the water that's able to be produced through the system.
Yeah, yeah. Counselor Cushion?
Thank you for coming. Going down through your list of, of cost of outfitting one fire person, it seems like it's quite expensive, five thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars, and then plus there's some additional costs, and there's cost of new members' training, and so, would that same cost be to the volunteer fire departments? Do they all have to have the same type of equipment, do they not, or?
Each department is specific to, to its own budget and to whatever gear they get. Most fire departments these days, and I can't say a hundred percent, because there's different chiefs doing different things out there, but most fire departments trying to achieve as much as possible towards N F P A standards, so that their people are protected. In the past, we used to share gear, we used to share face, face pieces. There'd be maybe two B A s in each department, and that would be it, and everybody would hand off bottles. We don't do that anymore because of the, the problems with contamination and stuff. I, I, I would be, thanks, I would be remiss to say that, that every fire department works differently because of the budget they have and who they are, and what, what liabilities chief wants to take, what standards are out there, a whole bunch of different things. I mean, it, it, it's not like it used to be where, where you get into a fire department and I throw you a pager and a pair of boots and say, let's go fight fires, you can't do that anymore, right? That's been proven over and over again over the last four or five decades.
So, there's no real standard, there's no real standard taken to, that every fire department has to have this certain level?
No, it's whatever, as an example, I have to go by what my budget is and what my council wants me to have. Volunteer fire departments are different because most of them are societies on themselves, and they're registered, and they go out and they decide what, what they're going to give, and they do have to declare that to councils. They have to say, here's what we are, here's what we provide. That's, that's in the municipal, the municipal government act, things like this. But there's no actual standard, the, the province did try to put in place general guidelines, and that is out there, and I use them as much as possible, because it's the only way to keep your people safe, and, and they do push that. Some, some chiefs do, not all chiefs.
Yeah. When you, hypothetical question. For, I'm concerned about my district, of course, right, which is District Six, which is the Pembroke, Cape Girardeau, Chicago, and then, and Main Shore Road, Pembroke Road, right? Is there an estimated response time that you allow to get to, to an area?
Standard response time, we don't have a standard response time. But, but normally, if you want to find out that, what that is, we basically look at past calls, and we can say, okay, it took us this long to get out there at that point, so that would give you an idea.
Certainly, better on the weather conditions too, of course.
Yeah, whether, time of day, everything. And it also changes your operations when, if it's nighttime or daytime, your operational thoughts and what you're doing for plans changes, because if it's a family dwelling, as an example, you expect the people to be sleeping in their bedrooms. If it's during the day, you don't, a whole bunch of things like that. Normally, the insurance bureau, when they call me and they ask me distances and stuff, I give them a distance, but I don't give them a specific timing. I say, our average, looking in that area before, was this, but I don't have a standard response time.
Okay. Getting back to what Trevor was.
No, go ahead, Jeff, you have to add.
Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry. Just, just on that, a couple of months ago, I, I was interested in response times, and so I pulled into the data, and generally speaking, and again, it's been a couple of months, so the exact number is not on the top of my head, but Yarmouth Fire Department, from the time a call is dispatched, the bell rings, and, and the guys know they have to go, the time they arrive on scene as reported back to dispatch, something in the area of five and a half minutes or so. On the average, and so, then I looked at the volunteer fire departments, because we dispatch for twenty-four departments, and the average is actually ten minutes longer. So, the, the, the bottom line is, because we have people in the station within a few feet of the trucks and the gear, we're able to get mobilized and get to the scene with a first response with two off, two, two firefighters, about ten minutes, almost exactly ten minutes faster, which is great for people in, in the area.
Yeah, that's what I'm, so, when they're making that, when the Yarmouth Fire Department is making that five-minute run, there's other, how can I say, other support being contacted at the same time to, to come, right? Is that what I mean?
Sometimes, so, and, and John can speak to this better than I can, but the Yarmouth Fire Department has something in the area of three hundred and thirty calls a year, okay? Not every call is at active fire. So, so a lot of them don't require calling out our volunteers or anything like that, so. So, there wouldn't necessarily be something else mobilized unless the call to dispatch said, you know, it's a motor vehicle accident, or, or there's information that, that clearly indicates that other support is needed. Otherwise, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the chief officer on duty makes the decision what to call out and when to do it.
Yeah, okay. What I like to see is, I like to see the fire departments and the firemen and women have to respond to no calls, that would be a perfect situation, but, you know, that, we know that doesn't happen. But getting back to what Trevor's question was about a, an actual contract with the, maybe I'm using the wrong word, actual contract with the Yarmouth Fire Department in the municipality of Yarmouth. For years, I think we've always assumed that we had a gentleman's, gentleperson's agreement and all this. It seems like we've lost, we've lost that opportunity of, of word of mouth and gentleman's agreement. And, but I guess from now, this point on, we're going to have to have some type of written agreement to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, I, I responded to Counselor Cunningham the other night in Tuskegee, and this issue, I guess, because of what's been going on in the last few months, you know, brings to light the need that we do, that brings to light the fact that we do need to articulate that agreement so that, you know, the expectations on both sides are clear, the town and municipality. So, that is something, it's on my to-do list, I'll generate a draft for discussion to begin the discussion this fall. The context of this is, and, and the warden has been around a while and may recall some of this, but back when my predecessor was, was holding my position, he went through the process of negotiating with Victoria's predecessor, and they had reached this agreement, the seventy thirty split. And when I started, I, I asked, I asked Ken, so, we don't have an agreement, and, and he said, well, Ray was going to draft it. So, Ray was gone, no agreement got drafted, and we really, I mean, we've had small issues over the years, but nothing significant. But, that's not a reason not to have a, a clear contract. There are some things that, that I can tell you that I will propose in, in the draft that I think you'll find beneficial in terms of the communication between your council and the, and the fire service provider, and, yeah, we'll get, we'll get on that this fall and start that discussion.
Yeah. It's good to have, it's good to have discussions and disagreements, but at the end of the day, we can all be satisfied that we're going to be well protected by the Yarmouth Fire Department in, in my area, in, in other ones that are supported by the, other districts that are supported by the Yarmouth Fire Department. That's my main concern, is that we're, you know, we're going to be well looked after, that's, that's a big concern as I, because I have people, I've already had people ask me a certain question, if things change, what's going to happen? So, so I just would like to have some type of reassurance that we're going to, we're going to be, move on. Yes, we could disagree, but at the end of the day, as long as we, we have something in place that, that works.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, on a more serious note this time. I've heard that the volunteers are not coming as fast as they used to. Now, if they, if they don't, is the Yarmouth Fire Department ready to hire more full-time? Or is this something that you'd, that you'd have to do?
I'll handle this one, John. John, John can speak to the volunteer situation in terms of the, the level of volunteers we have and his efforts to recruit more volunteers. He and I have had a discussion earlier this spring about the, the real need to, to put a little more resource and, and effort behind John and his efforts to, to recruit more volunteers. So, the things that, that we're doing this year to, to support that, it includes opening the hall upstairs in the fire hall where they, where they have social functions. That's great for morale, and that's been lost for a number of years now due to fire martial considerations. So, we're spending, I'm going to say north of two hundred thousand this year to, to finish up that work and get that hall open, you know, and so, we're hoping by the end of this fiscal year that will be the case. As far as hiring additional staff, you know, we have, we have two paid firefighters on, on duty, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. That is, is not cheap, and, you know, we've talked, John has, has talked with council about how to increase the numbers to get up to four firefighters on duty, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. That would be a, a fairly costly proposal. It does adhere to, and John will tell you this because he's told me many times, there is an N F P A standard or guideline or what have you that, that suggests, and there's lots of research that will tell you that it is, it is safer to have four firefighters in the initial response. We don't have the fiscal capacity, I don't believe the fiscal capacity to move on that anytime soon, but if that's a discussion that municipal council wants to have, I think that that's, that's worthwhile. That's, that's where, in the context of an intermunicipal agreement on fire services, where we should have, and we used to have at one time, a fire policy advisory committee, a group of you folks sitting around the table with us folks, and, and hearing these kinds of proposals from the chief and making, making informed decisions about what the right level of service is. And so, you know, as, as a fire professional, John is, John is outstanding, and he will always recommend to the councils the, the level of, of service and support that he thinks is, is appropriate, excuse me, appropriate. What your job is and what our, our council's job is, is to put that in our context. And that, that goes for John or for our engineer or our planner or myself. We make recommendations based on professional perspective. Your job as elected officials is to represent your constituents, understand their values, priorities and concerns, and make the appropriate decision with all of that information. So, you know, recently, we've talked about increasing manpower in terms of what would the cost be, how could it happen, that sort of thing, but there was no decision to move forward with that. So, we depend very much on volunteers, and we probably haven't done enough to support John and his efforts to, to recruit and round out the, the numbers. But we are, we are well aware that that is the, the strength of our fire department, is the number and the ability of the volunteers to respond. Recently, we met with the Yarmouth Volunteer Fire Department to talk about some of the changes that, that are possibly going to happen in the near future, and they shared with us some of their concerns. And one of the concerns was the numbers, and, you know, not everybody, not every employer is, is willing to allow the volunteer firefighter to leave the workplace to go and, and do their volunteer work. And, and that makes it more difficult for John when he doesn't know how many are going to show up when, when that call comes. So, if we had more, then maybe a smaller percentage is okay. Now, John's got some ideas about how to organize that, but we need the volunteers before we can really, really move forward.
How, how, how big of a fire does it have to be before you, you call mutual help?
It, it depends, it depends on actually not the size of the fire, but the situation itself.
The situation, so, so, I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to say, if you didn't, that's just the if. If you didn't have any volunteers and you had a fire call, could you call mutual help right away?
Yes, yeah, each, each, as an example, it doesn't matter what, what rank the officer is going out. If the officer that's going to be in command is going out of the station, and he looks at all the information he gathers from his size up and says, I need more people, he's going to do it. And every one of them have the authority to do that.
Okay, okay, thank you. I have a couple. You made comments to a five-minute response time, basically, if a call comes in. So, scenario again, we're going down to Pinky's Point, I'm giving you a heads up. There's a fire call, it's three o'clock in the morning, and it's, I'm just going to throw, it's a fish plant. The call goes in, you get dispatched. My question to you is, what do you roll with?
Everything. No, no, we basically, basically what happens, especially if it's a fish plant and it's in operation, you're going to have a lot of different chemicals and stuff like that in it. And basically, most officers right away will, will do a page out and also do a mutual aid page out, because it's going to be a large plant.
Okay, so it's in that respect, that, that's what I, I kind of thought, but I just wanted to have an understanding. Now, at a house fire, eight fifty-five Shebog Road, it's a house fire, and you get paged out. What happens there, just, I'll say a tanker, pumper, what, what roles for that?
If, if it's, depending upon the information they get from nine one one, if it's an actual working fire, everybody's going, we're paging it out right away, normally, that's what happens, it's paged out right away, and you go to it. And, and depending upon the... And, and depending upon the situation with our volunteers, let's say it's fishing, seizing, or let's say something else is happening where the volunteers aren't going to be readily available, they may also do mutual aid right away.
Okay.
There's a whole bunch of factors when you're in command of something that you have to take into, you know.
Okay. So, when there is a, a fire page-out, the reason why I'm asking is, sitting at this council, there's seven councilors, and the Yarmouth Fire Department covers five districts, five of us as councilors. And so, we're a little concerned on, on, on time response and so on. The, when there is a fire and you're paged out, and you have two paid firefighters on call, one stays back at the station.
Well, we, we have, we actually have two that go.
Oh, okay.
All the time. It's not, I, I know you've utilized what you're saying, because in the past, that's what they did. One would stay at the station, the other one would jump in the truck and go. But it's actually two firefighters going now. And sometimes during the day, if the fire inspector is handy-dandy, he'll jump on the truck and have three. But that's very rare.
Oh, okay. See, I, I was wondering if one, I'll say one paid gentleman gets in the truck, one stays there in case there's a, a town fire, and then a volunteer gets in the truck, the two. Okay, so the two of them hit out. And then my last question, and I'm not going to use any numbers, but the municipality of Yarmouth pays a fair chunk of, I should say, a fair amount of money into the fire department. And I'm not going to ask for a direct answer today, but I believe that from our councilor's direction, we'd like to have our staff have an understanding of how our money is spent in the respect, we have a contract, and usually with the contract, there, there's work in progress, how it, how it all goes. The amount of money that we pay in, I think they would like to have an understanding of X number for here, X number here, X number here, X number here. And I don't, and I'm, I'm not asking for a direct answer.
No, but what we do at the end of the year, in, in terms of the billing, so the, the contract, or the unwritten contract, is that the municipality pays 30% of the previous year's actual costs. And so, when we bill that, we provide, and Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's from our, our non-consolidated financial statements prepared by Grant Thornton, they take the, the fire services cost, we remove the, the billing to the water utility, yes, the water utility charge comes out. And is there anything else that comes in? Yeah, the big one is, is the, the cost of the water utilities. You guys pay the water utility directly, and so do we. So, that comes out, the net is, is 30% is billed to the municipality. And so, what you get in that is the degree, is the level of breakdown in terms of how much goes to wages, benefits, utilities, what have you, all the way down. If there's any other information that you want in terms of operations or how the funds are used, I mean, it's, it's, we're not, we're not a closed shop, we, we value the partnership, it's absolutely necessary, so it's just a matter of asking.
Okay.
Okay.
So, at this time, does Greg or Victoria, do you have any questions you wish to track and so on? I, I do realize.
Mr. Warden, if I could. I would just like to thank Jeff and John for coming. I know this is probably the first time we've had an exchange like this, certainly in quite some time, and I think it's been productive, everybody's learned a lot, and they, they understand a lot. So, I want to, I want to thank you for coming, and pleasure to meet you, John.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, 6.4, request for value proposition presentation from the RENS CAO, and I'm going to, Victoria, if you'll take that and explain to councilors.
Sure. So, I had a couple conversations with the CEO of the Western Regional Enterprise Network, Angelique LeBlanc. They had undertaken a significant activity to define a value proposition for the region in order to make opportunities to local businesses in the forefront, in order also to sell the region, you know, to the world. And that body of work is done, and I think that it, it kind of is council's responsibility, maybe to invite the CEO and maybe the board chair to come and present that value proposition to council, and understand what's in, in the proposition, and why those items are in the proposition. And it will help this council in terms of decision-making, understanding what the, the regional enterprise network is up to. So, it's my recommendation that council write a letter inviting, inviting the CEO and the board chair to do a presentation.
What's the, what's the council? All right, so we'll move that forward to the regular council meeting on the 19th. All right. Item number 6.5, Lake Milo boardwalk, his warden Anthony here, however, he stepped out, I don't know what he's going to talk about.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Cunningham.
Mr. Anthony's absent. So, as part of the budgeting process, we had set aside some dollars for engineering costs, and the question is, we're getting a lot of requests from residents saying, where is the project? And my response is, I'm hoping to get some, I think we've got to move the project along, not, not in terms of funding the capital piece, but in terms of, of, you know, getting, getting some conception of where we're going, what we can do, and, because it's lakefront, obviously, realistically, and, and what that might cost, that very preliminary piece about generally what it will look like, generally who it will serve, and generally how it will be phased. So, clearly, we're not going to have the dollars to, to put one the whole way in a year or anything like that, but we talked, I guess, initially about, about starting at the Milo Boat Club, and that, and that, again, those are just first thoughts, and having some kind of pavilion-type or, or structure there, small scale, where people could enjoy fireworks or boat races, or whatever the case, and then, and then moving with a boardwalk on down the, on down the, and when I say boardwalk, may not be constructed of boards, likely it would be concrete or something like that, and then just how that actually goes to guardrail, all of those things that an engineering firm or somebody that does that type of work would, would begin to answer for. So, and, and Mr. Anthony just came in, so just saying that we were looking for an answer as to where, when we might expect the, the process of, of conceptualization of the Milo project and, and/or the sort of phasing into the engineering and the various phases of the project might, might be expected from staff.
You wish to respond, Mr. Warden?
I, I can, I guess in, in some respects, I, I believe the Milo, I'll call it Milo Project, is something that's been on the radar for a long time. It's been discussed a few times and then put on the back burner. I believe with the way the municipality wants to do some projects, and I, I personally feel that the Milo Project would be a, a great benefit, it would be a terrific asset to ourselves, it would be something we could be very proud of as a, as a completed project in the near fut, near future, in, in a few years. When it was first announced that we were kind of thinking about this, I was approached, and I think some of the other councils were approached, that a lot of our residents thought it was a good idea. We're, we're about the only municipality within Nova Scotia, other than HRM and some places also in Cape Breton, that has the fortunate to have a lake right handy to a town that could be used, Lake Benook in Dartmouth, and they utilize that. I'm not saying that Lake Milo will ever become that, but I believe there's opportunity that we can do a lot of things. Counselor Allen and I have spoken, also Counselor Cushing and the deputy warden, on different ideas and thoughts that could be taken and operated there in, in the, in the future, and I think it would be a terrific asset, again, to, to the municipality. So, whatever council wishes to do on moving forward, kudos.
So, if I could, Mr. Chairman and council, so the question from Counselor Trevor Cunningham was, you know, a budget allotment was made to do some conceptual work at the engineering level, and that does remain on the to-do list for this fiscal year. We've been focusing our attention on the seasonal-related capital projects and engineering projects, which you're all aware of. So, this is something that likely, I haven't assigned it yet, I haven't given the Director of Public Works or the Director of Finance any direction to move on that yet. And it's something that will happen, you know, late this fiscal year, and, and move in that way. So, it is on the work plan, just hasn't been assigned yet.
Is there any more discussion on that subject? Hearing none, I relinquish the chair to you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, it would just be 6.6, interim resolution report? Is that the last? Go ahead.
So, Mr. Warden, as I had shared with you, this is an important piece from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. Essentially, the association is seeking the input from its member municipalities around prioritizing the resolutions that are on the table. As you're all aware, only a certain number of anything that's on the table gets to move forward. And so, the memo that went out to all municipal councilors offered three opportunities to engage. And September 24th is the closest engagement opportunity to us at the Old O in Woolfield, but that's the day our audit committee meets with auditors, so there are some of us that aren't able to go that day. I just want to encourage any counselor who had, you know, who can attend one of those three sessions to plug in and attend, understand how the resolutions are developed, how they're put forward, how they're ranked. And I think the warden and I had a conversation about making sure that at, at least, at least me and one other counselor went. So, I, I won't be able to go on the 24th, so I'll have to go to the Truro meeting. And so, if there's another counselor who can at least go to the Truro meeting, then at least the CAO and one member of council will have attended. So, I just, I leave that with you.
I, I would have been interested to go, but on the 21st, I'm at meetings in Halifax. On the 24th, I just found out that I have to be, tentatively, I have to be in Halifax on the 24th also, so I've sent off a message to Greg on, on the audit committee and so on. And October 1st, I am free, but I'm not driving to Port Hoxbury, so. If some of the other councilors, Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
I am available on the 21st to go to Truro. Sure.
Is that then the two of you will talk then, or whatever?
Sure.
And so on? And if any other, yeah, if any other counselor, like you say, is available on the, on the 24th? The 24th is a Monday, is it? Yes, 24th is a Monday. So, if any counselor, hey, I mean, it's a long drive to the old orchard, so you have to whoop on Sunday and spend the evening or something, eh? Now, on that note, that is the last bit on the agenda, but I know the CAO and myself, we had a, a long discussion yesterday on a lot of topics and so on, after we had gone through the agenda. And I just want to bring to your attention, I'm only going to talk about one, it's our, our business park, and we've been looking at doing something out there, some land clearing and so on. And I'll say I'm happy to report, towards the end of September, there'll be some, hopefully the, the contractor will be able to start in clearing some of the, the land that we had originally wished to start and develop and so on. So, that was a good thing. Go ahead, Counselor Cushing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I know we had our TIR discussion and whatnot, and I, I didn't realize we only had one chance to, to speak. I just wanted to make it, make it public notice that, you know, we, we do have concerns about deer population on our roads and, and whatnot, and I was going to ask TIR if we could, if there's any, any way that we could have some deer signs put up in, in various areas where they are being affected. Because I know, like in the Cape Porchew area, we've had a, a lot of deer hits.
Yes.
And our deer-hit vehicles, I'll put it that way.
Yes, yeah.
So, that was one area that I was, I was going to request for, so perhaps we can forward a.
Well, yes. Letter off. Yeah, in, in that respect, and when I mentioned, you know, ask your residents and so on, and yourself, just call the MLA's office and make that comment to him, and let it try to flow back through.
Yes, I understand that, that's, it's a good idea to do that, too, but I just like to make sure council is, is aware of what, what the problem is. I know there must be a problem in other areas, too, so.
Deer, yeah, in the town of Yarmouth, they could use a lot of deer signs, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
Man, yeah, a lot there. Was there, go ahead, Deputy Warden.
In regards to deer, I, I find this year, they seem to be more in the ditches and stuff, because where it's been dry summer, that, that the feed is not as plentiful as it normally would be. So, so there's a lot of deer in the ditches where, where they normally wouldn't be.
Yeah.
And now, of course, with all the apple trees and stuff, they're hungry. And I notice this, because I'm, I live out in the country, but I find the deer this year are skinnier than usual, they're showing their ribs. So, now the apples are dropping off the trees, which are, unfortunately, there's a lot of them along the sides of the road, that, that they're coming out to get something to eat. I can whistle, and they'll come running, and I kid you not. I'll take a video if you want to see it.
Was there any further information? Hearing none? Or adjourned? Thank you.